I think we're gonna go ahead and get this ball rolling.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Are we ready? Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Pecosin Planning Commission for Monday, March 19th, regular session to order. And with that said, I'm gonna invite anybody that wishes to do so to join me in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. You're under no obligation to do so. If you choose not to, we won't have any problem with that. But our group, we usually open our meetings this way, so here we go. I'm gonna offer the invocation, which will be the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us all our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory. Amen. And we'll have the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. With that said, we will move on to the approval of the minutes, which we have several work sessions and a regular session to approve. The first one is the work session for January 18th, 2018. Do we have any, anything to add to that or anything that's found that needs to be corrected? If not, could we have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
So moved.
And second?
I'll second.
All right, Karen.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Goddard?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidler?
Aye.
Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, and then we have a regular session, minutes for the regular session of January 18th, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Karen?
Commissioner Gribble?
Commissioner Emmett? Aye.
Commissioner Tidler?
Aye.
Commissioner Goddard?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
And the work session for February 15th, 2018. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes as written? Second?
Second.
Karen?
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Goddard?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidler?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That vote was carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, and the last is the work session, minutes for February 22nd, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
So moved.
Second?
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidler?
Aye.
Commissioner Goddard?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Okay, and next we'll go to the audience for visitors. And at this time, if anyone has anything they wish to come forward and let the planning commission know about, please do so at this time. Anything other than the public hearing item, which is on the agenda. And with not seeing anyone who wishes to speak at this time, we will close the audience for visitors, and we will move on to the public hearing item. And that tonight is proposed amendment to Article 11, Village Commercial District, Section 11-19, sign requirements. And we have, do we have a small presentation, Wally?
Yes, a small presentation.
Thank you very much.
It won't be as long as the ones you've heard already tonight.
It's all right, thank you. You got plenty of time.
That's right. We are talking about village commercial district signage tonight. And just to get the preliminaries out of the way, this was advertised in the Daily Press on March 2nd and March 9th. As it is a text amendment, there were no property owners needed to be notified in this case, so that's not applicable. Okay, we've gone over a little bit the last two sessions while we're doing this, basically to eliminate some confusion in the VC District and to open it up a little bit as far as some of the signs that we might normally expect to see in a village commercial-type development, notably freestanding signs. So with that, currently, I'm gonna show you the current version. The revisions are in bold, underlined, and sometimes strikeout text, but I'll go over that. Sign requirements, right now we have a requirement that says freestanding monument signs shall not be allowed in this district, that being the Village Commercial District proposing to delete that. And in its place, we're gonna put subsection A. A development project may have one of the following four onsite sign types. So you gotta choose what kind of sign type you want, for the purpose of identifying the entire project development area, the entire development. One, freestanding signs in accordance with provisions below and further regulated in accord with Appendix B of the City of Pecosin Sign Ordinance. We've talked a little bit about Appendix D, and I actually gave you a reference for that with this packet. So this language stays the same, and that's why I'll kinda put it in, I put it in italics there, just so I wouldn't take up as much space and have so many lines, a little bit more legible. One freestanding sign is permitted per unified development area. Think of the fountains as one unified development area, at least the commercial part, provided that the unified development area has a minimum road frontage of 50 feet. However, one additional freestanding sign is permitted for a unified development area fronting on two public roads, and I'll get to that example here in a minute, and having a separate entrance on each road. It's two different public roads, not the same road one side and the other, but two different public roads. And that's taken from Appendix D, Section 3D, 1A. This actually supersedes that. Only one freestanding sign allowed per entrance. I gotta press the right key, there we go. Okay, the second one, B, and this is where we have the difference between the version one and the version two. The version one is a version where you do not allow electronic message sign. The second version, and I'm denoting that in blue here, basically, is gonna be the one that would allow electronic message signs. So if you go with version one, no electronic message sign shall be allowed, or alternately, we just even wouldn't have that, that didn't make sense. We would not have that as a standard at all, we'd just not even mention it. Okay, I'll get to more on that as we go forth. B or C, because remember, it's gonna depend on whether we keep that sentence on electronic message signs. Setback restrictions contained in 6A, 1 of Appendix D shall not apply to common property lines of parcels included in a unified development area. What that really means is that if you're in a unified development area, you don't have to worry about setbacks. But where that development area abuts property that's not within that area, you would have to obey setbacks. Setback restrictions contained, well, I think I just said that, shall apply to street setback and property line setbacks from other properties not within a unified development area. So again, that's taken from, it supersedes Appendix D, but it's based on language in Appendix D, which again, we're not addressing tonight. In the future, we may wanna look at it, but trying to go, trying to take this in small bites. Okay, C or D, same admonition there, depends on whether we keep the electronic message signing. This one's important. Where a conditional use permit has been issued for residential developments separate from commercial office or mixed-use structures, additional freestanding signage shall be allowed. Such shining, signing, such signing shall be monument-style. Otherwise, the signings shall conform to Section 3A and C of Appendix D. What that means, and think about this as the fountains, there is a provision in that development for townhouse development. If that townhouse development goes through, it will have a separate entrance off of Alpha Street. Because that's residential, it will be allowed to have its own identifying sign. It'll be a monument-style sign, but it'll have its own sign. Okay. Okay. We're keeping this the same. You know, if you choose not to have a freestanding sign, you can still have one wall sign, one projection sign, or one window sign. Not advocating a change for that. Okay, this B, this is a little new, too. We specify what we're talking about here. A development element, a development may have one of the following onsite signs per non-residential tenant. Again, wall sign, projection sign, or window sign. That's largely unchanged. I just specified onsite sign and for non-residential tenant, because obviously, we've talked about residential will have their own signage allowance. Okay, this one, pretty important. Sign illumination, I added color in design, and I will tell you, I have based this language on what's already in Appendix D, it's just that I made it mandatory rather than permissive. Illumination. All wall, projection, window signs shall be externally illuminated. Freestanding signs may be externally illuminated or internally illuminated, backlit, interior bulb, but shall not be electronic message signs. Version one. Version two, basically reads the same, except at the very back, it says, freestanding signs may be externally illuminated, internally illuminated, backlit, or, I should've added the word "B," or be electronic message signs. Okay, so that's the difference there. Color in design, and I sort of folded them both together here, but as village commercial developments lend themselves to multiple signs, certainly true, a harmonious and unified signing program shall be required, in the case of backlit, internally illuminated signs, and electronic message signs, if we choose to go that route. The background shall be dark and the lettering light in order that the backlighting penetrate the letters only, so as to reduce unnecessary glare, improve readability at a great distance, and render to the sign itself and the community in general a more pleasing appearance. That gives a lot of latitude right there, and remember, the Architectural Review Board will be reviewing village commercial signage as well. So very, very, very important distinction there. And again, I took that from Appendix D, just made it directory instead of, you know, may or should, got rid of those words. And lastly, specific sign requirements detailed in this section shall supersede requirements listed in the sign ordinance, which is Appendix D. All other sign criteria not specifically outlined in Section 1119, which we just went over, shall be governed by the regulations in the City of Pecosin Sign Ordinance. It's really no different than how we do it now, just put in a little bit of language in there to make it clear. That's all we did. Okay, with that in mind, I do have some examples. Okay, first of all, I said in beige, but it occurred to me, looking at this map, it doesn't look very beige. But I'm sorry about this, but let me just kinda come out here. Dan, if you want to man that from there on out, I appreciate it. That's our village commercial zoning district. That area outlined there is part of the legacy development, and in fact, that will probably end up being single-family homes eventually, once they get to that phase. You can go on, Dan, thank you. Okay, this is example one, I guess. You may recognize this as the property that Straight Shot Brewing is going to locate on. So under this ordinance, right now, it's not allowed at all. Can't do a freestanding sign at all right now. If this ordinance goes through as written, you'd be able to have one freestanding sign on the property, and that's the entrance, roughly where the entrance is. I've got a map of it coming up that looks better. But the point I wanna raise is, you can also have an off-premise sign. Remember, Appendix D governs everything that's not covered under village commercial. So you could have one there, notice there's a property line there. Advance the sign, advance one, Dan, please, thank you. Here, I tried to indicate this property line going away, you can't see the fish hook very well, but if they did away with that, they would be able to put a freestanding sign closer to the corner of Victory and City Hall Avenue. The reason I mention this here is because, in this particular case, signage up here is gonna be very important. They will obviously, and they're able to do it here, I should make it clear that the first time, it has to be on an adjoining property. So that's why they would have to get rid of that property line there in order to put it there, otherwise, they'd have to stay on that property right there. Okay, go forward one there, Dan. You can probably just go forward from there. I actually got a concept plan, and I apologize for the messiness, but what I was trying to illustrate, in a little bit different color, was in relation to where the road is gonna eventually be, or at least the right-of-way, the road may not be there for many years, but you'd be able to put a freestanding sign here. I suppose as an alternative, you could probably put it somewhere in here, if you wanted to. Probably not gonna put it here, because again, there's no connection there, it won't be for a long time, and it would also fly in the face of the purpose of the off-premise sign. All right, go ahead, Dan, please. Okay, this is the fountains. What they would, again, under the current ordinance, they don't get any of this, but under the new ordinance, they'd get a freestanding sign here, and if they ever make this connection, they could get another freestanding sign here, because it's a different public road. If they develop townhouses, and I know that's a thin strip, but if they get that done, they could possibly have a residential freestanding sign monument-style right there. So that's how it would affect the fountains. Go ahead, Dan, please, thank you. And one more. I did take a few updated pictures, I think the last ones you saw, there was a lot of snow on the ground, and oddly enough, it could've been last week, too. But anyway, this is the Professional Office Park, Dr. Sevillah, it's on the corner, right there. This is an example of some, what are freestanding signs? They have two of them on the property, they have some wall signs, right there. Dan, if you'll go forward, please. And they've got another freestanding sign on the corner. Under the, under the village commercial amendments that we're looking at tonight, unless you considered Victory Boulevard a street, which I suppose you could, that sign would be problematical. They got this sign by going through a variance process. So anyway, that could still be possible if we considered Victory Boulevard, but they both front on City Hall Avenue, so. But I think the point I'm trying to make, though, is that, you know, with these individual signs, there's a wall sign there, you see it a little bit, you know, they can, they can look really nice, and they do serve their purpose. Go ahead, Dan. And we got the fountains up in Pecosin, they've got their construction sign where they have all their SWIP permits and everything tacked to. Several other buildings could be built further back here, we don't have anything from them. I think you'll, might've noticed if you looked at the school report, we don't have anything in for that right now. One more, Dan, and then I think I'll... This area back here is where the townhouses may go in the future on that strip of land. Again, we'll just have to see. But there could be another sign there for those as well. One more, Dan. Okay, this is, and I kept a snow picture here, this is the electronic message sign for the middle school. Now, it's hard to see, but you can see the white lettering up there, it's the sun glare that makes it, it's kinda hard to read. But the idea of the dark background and the light letters, this is really what we're talking about. Now, the configuration and the look of it, you know, maybe it could look better, maybe it could look different, but that's essentially what we're talking about with a dark background and the bright, bright letters. I did wanna kinda show that as an example. With all that being said, that's the end of the brief presentation.
Okay.
And I'll take any questions you might have. I did not add on there, but you know, I really, I gave some thought to Planning Commission's questions last month at the work session as to whether we should look at electronic message signs or not. My gut feeling tells me that in light of the text amendment two months ago, that is the direction the city council's gonna want to. Now, I don't have any, you know, specific, you know, ironclad thing, but that's, that's my gut feeling. I know you wanted to listen to the general public that may have showed up tonight, so I'll just say that and be quiet, but I'll take any questions you have.
Well, Wally sits down, y'all wanna ask any questions?
I have none. I think you've covered it very well three times now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we pounded it into the ground, haven't we? We've, yeah.
Eating with chickens.
Yeah, well...
Okay, thank you, Wally. Okay, at this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. And if anyone has anything to say regarding this particular proposed amendment, please feel free to come to the podium. There is no one here that is going to come to the podium, so we're gonna quickly close the public hearing and move right on to the discussion, if there is any, by the Planning Commission. Comments?
Really, not much you could comment on. I have no problem with the sign, the sign ordinance, I think it makes a lot of sense, I think they look good. I will certainly say what I said before, is I don't see the reason for electronic signage in a small town like Pecosin. I realize the council said they want them, or it indicated they want them, I guess that's council's decision. I don't see what we gain. What's the upside of having electronic sign? Is any business gonna come to Pecosin because they can put up an electronic sign that wouldn't come anywhere? But that's just, that's just my opinion, so I just make that at this point, Dan.
I think it's a valid point. We may have, we may be able to ask next Monday night why.
We may.
We may, but, 'cause we certainly, I think unanimously, and I think you're exactly right on that. But anyway, anything else?
Popular use of those signs is, does seem to have some use, and you probably could all guess where I'm going with this, as a weather guy. You see, you know, on the temperatures and stuff like that.
Yes.
So that could be some, that could be a valid reason that people would enjoy it.
Yeah, and we did have one at the bank.
Yeah.
If you remember, remember the one there?
I missed it when it went away.
Because it did tell the temperature and the time, and I guess it pooped out, or maybe they just changed hands and whatever, but we did have one at one time. And that one wasn't really a distraction, I don't think.
Well, you didn't have one on every business.
It was just there in the middle of a, in the middle of a line.
Exactly, one works, twenty doesn't.
That's right. All right, any more comments?
I just have two quick comments, one pertaining to the sign ordinance in general, the proposed changes, and in particular with, with Straight Shot Brewing, is I feel like they are sticking their necks out to put an establishment like that in Pecosin and build it, and I think that could serve as an anchor, I think it could be something really fresh for the city in an area that I, quite frankly, I think could really use something like that. And I think that we as a city, and in particular, the planning department, should do whatever we can to help that succeed. So whatever we can do to get him, the advertisements, and get the signs to where he needs to go. So that's just my general question, comment about that. And then as far as the electronic signs, council did make it clear that they would like to have the electronic signs. Part of the reasoning was, they didn't think it was fair that certain establishments should have them and not others, so I think under that umbrella, I think that the village commercial should probably have them if everybody else does, too, and also because with the new village commercial zoning boundary, because of the fountains, it does abut With Creek Road, and it does extend there, so having With Creek, and you can have it, you can have it, you can't have it, then you can have it, I think, just for consistency.
Are we prepared to make a motion to accept?
So I guess clarification, are we accepting this? I guess it's not our choice, the electronic signs, we're accepting what you presented.
Yes, but I would like the Planning Commission's recommendation on whether we should include electronic part of this or not.
Two motions.
I had two different, I'd like for the Planning Commission to represent one of, or recommend one, if you recommend either of them.
Are we ready to vote on whether we, or variable message signs, I should say?
I think the Planning Commission could vote to approve it, and as a condition, say, allowing the...
Not allow them if the council has already approved it?
Well, what I'm saying is earlier, I, my feeling is that council's going to want electronic message signs, that's my feeling, anyway.
Clear, right?
Yeah, I think so.
So why would we?
Well...
Know when they've already over, basically, accepted them?
I think that's what you're...
If they wanna overrule me, they can, but that doesn't make me personally wanna change my vote. I mean, I'm not a city councilman, so they have every right to vote.
Do they give a reason for it, or did you just say, it made it fair, is that the reasoning?
It's my understanding, and I don't wanna speak for any council members, but it's my understanding that, yes, it wasn't fair that government institutions should be allowed to have electronic signs without that same provision. Yeah, schools or other government entities, if there's possibly one that the city uses for flood information, for example. It's not fair that, that they be used for government institutions, but not for businesses. And that extends your all zoning, is what my understanding is.
Yeah, village commercial is a commercial zoning district, so...
Does that affect the open signs, the closed signs? Like, I know that a place down there has a neon open, red open sign.
We consider that a window sign, I would think.
That would be a window sign, not an electronic sign.
Yeah, it's like the neon sign, and in fact, a lot of ordinances have a prohibition on it, and I don't know that ours does, but, but neon signs, that...
I would offer up, Wally, and you tell me if I'm wrong, electronic signs, to me, is a misleading term, because anything with electricity run to it is an electronic sign. I think we're talking about variable message signs.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, we, I've heard it, electronic message signs, too. We actually do define electronic message sign in the ordinance as essentially an electronically-controlled sign, like we're talking about the variable...
Every thirty seconds, it cycles through the...
Every eight seconds, every eight seconds in our ordinance.
Period, some periodicity, it's cycling.
And in fact, we have restrictions on electronic message signs that most jurisdictions don't have, that I've seen. We already banned scrolling and abrupt message changes, you know, we already banned as part of our electronic message signs, so...
Whether like if they have a clock, or they have a weather, that they keep it accurate?
Well, yeah, well, you know, and I can see why you're saying that, I kinda feel the same way, but time and temperature and gas prices are regulated differently, so, you know, that's not...
I mean, if they don't change it for the daylight savings, I mean, I think they should... I mean, the gas stations can have an electronic sign that blinks their, their...
They're required by state law to advertise and be current with their gas prices. They can do it one of several ways, but one of the ways they can do it is to have the numbers that you see at the gas stations.
Like, get your attention?
Well, I think if they blinked them, they'd probably be deemed a distraction of traffic, a VDOT, I would think, would have something to say about it.
It just seems like such a can of worms, because it's not so...
I think that they, isn't there a provision that it has to be stagnant for eight seconds before...
In our ordinance, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Eight seconds, which is a pretty good long time, I mean...
It's not rolling real quick. Yeah.
I mean, like I say, I mean, obviously, the planning commission could recommend as it feels. But my gut feeling is that when it goes to council, they're going to approve the electronic message signs.
So are we doing two motions? Or are we thinking one motion?
Well, I mean, you can do it one of several ways. You could, you could vote on either one, or what you could do is vote to approve the text with either adding electronic control signs or, or not adding electronic control. I think you could do that. I mean, depends on, I mean, you know, of course, you'll need a recommendation and a second on whichever variation is used.
And I don't know if there's more of a consensus on the sign ordinance in general, the proposed changes versus the electronic. There might be more of a disagreement on the second.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think the decision two months ago, I mean, the planning commission earlier that, you know, they felt that that was not a good, we're past that now, at least for.
I know, last year, as I said, I mean, I know the temperature stuff can be nitpicky. If the clock or the temperature are way off, it becomes an eyesore after a while. You know, somebody's got to maintain it at least a minimum. That's my feeling. I mean, if it's like 20 degrees off, or the temperature, time doesn't change with daylight savings, that's kind of annoying. I don't know if I'd like somebody to be able to do that.
Can you mandate that? I mean.
I don't think Dylan's rule would allow us to mandate that.
Business would want it to be accurate.
The car that I drove to work here tonight is 14 years old, and it tells me the time and temperature.
There you go.
I don't need a sign to tell me that.
I don't know if I need a sign, but if someone's going to do one, I think they'll, I think they'll maintain.
I don't think the one at the bank was always accurate.
Pretty accurate. You know, one thing, I think we all discussed this too, is, you know, yes, we can't think in terms of every business coming here putting one of these out, because the cost restrictions, they're expensive. So it's, I kind of feel like it's unlikely that it will be a great pile of these signs. I voted against it because I thought in the event that it could be, but in reality, I don't think it will be, because it will be costly. Put them up. There'll be some that will. A larger business would. Make your average, small business is not going to do it. They're going to put a sign up. Just a regular sign. So, I don't know. I mean, I think the die is kind of cast on it. And I think we had our shot at it, and.
You're right. You're absolutely right. It's just that I feel like if we believe that they're wrong, then voting for them.
Yeah.
Is really capitulating to a different, to a different power. And I don't think that that's necessarily appropriate either. But I understand what you're saying. We've had a couple of months to think about it, and I appreciate everybody thinking about it. I will, in order just to try to move things along, I will make a motion that I expect will be shot down. And that is, I will move that we approve the ordinance with the exception of electronic signs.
Okay, without them.
And the definition of electronic sign is really the fact is, it's changing.
Or what do you, what do you call it?
Variable message.
Yeah, the variable message signs.
And I will second that motion.
Can I just clarify? Bill, what you mean is approving the version of Wally's language that says electronic message signs are not permitted in village commercial.
Since there are two options, I think we have to go one way or another. And I think he said that probably the easiest way to do it is to vote one and then vote the other, I suppose.
Standing on principle. I appreciate that. No, I think certainly did. We certainly did. We've had a unanimous.
We have a motion and a second. We'll see how the council feels, commission feels.
Why wouldn't you want it there? Let me, I want, I want to make sure I'm clear. If you do not want it in village commercial, but it's allowed everywhere else, is that correct?
That's what it would be. And remember, village commercials are relatively small areas.
I mean, if we voted against this, it would be, it would be allowed everywhere except village commercial.
That's correct.
It would be, it would be unfair to village commercial.
Why, why would you vote against that for village commercial if everyone else has that ability? I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
How did that come about? We never voted on, on putting electronic or message signs anywhere. Maybe, maybe, maybe council approved it.
As a discussion point last month, because in light of the city council's decision, you know, again, I, I just.
Are you telling me the city coun, I'm, I'm, I'm asking. I'm not challenging. I'm asking.
Right.
The city council has directed that the regulations reflect that variable message signs are authorized in the other sections?
They're allowed in all commercial districts. Yes.
All zoning, isn't it just, not just commercial?
I didn't, I didn't pick up on that.
That's what it is, yeah. That's what.
I'm sorry, I didn't pay, I mean, certainly, I agree with what you say. If they're, if they're authorized in other commercial districts, then they should be authorized in village commercial.
They are.
I didn't pick up on that.
It shouldn't be unfair to them. The way this is now, it would more or less put them out, and everybody else could have one.
I will withdraw my motion.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so that, I mean, just to clarify, I hated to vote against y'all, because I appreciate you standing on, on the principle.
Well, I didn't pick up on that. I was really, I was really wrong on that.
Then again, if we pass it this way, are we basically, as I say, we agree with what city council passed?
It's too late anyway.
I guess what we're saying is, if it's, if they have authorized it in the commercial district, which is up and down with Creek and Victory Boulevard, why would we say that's, why would the city say that's okay and not put them in village commercial?
Well, I would agree with Gus, because they're not speaking for me.
I am, my, my argument primarily was they're sort of unsightly and distracting, and they're more distracted with Big Road than they are in, if, that we ever get one back here in the legends.
And that's what we vote.
I think it's okay.
We voted not.
I agree with your point earlier that you were saying it's a can of worms.
That was what we, we said we did not feel exactly.
I didn't realize that that had come through.
We all voted unanimously against.
And even though city hall, this is just me personally, though, city hall has made their vote, personally, I am still against variable message signs. So I don't see any compelling reason for me to change my vote. And I'll probably get outvoted, and that's fine.
That's all right.
That happens all the time.
It is not a problem.
So is there a motion on the floor?
All right, well.
I will re-estate my motion so we can vote.
All right, he's going to keep his motion.
What is your motion again?
My motion was that we approve sign ordinance that Wally suggested, with the exception of, and I use the word variable message signs, which is one of the two options that he presented.
And I will, again, second that motion.
So we have a motion on, on the floor.
Okay.
So we're going to vote for this motion.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Godden?
Aye.
Commissioner Tiddler?
Aye.
Commissioner. Because city hall, or city council has already said we're going to have electronic signs, and we can't put that back in. I don't think it's fair to not allow that for village commercial, so no. Commissioner Gribble?
No.
Chairwoman Shriver?
No.
Okay. So we have a tie. All right. So what are we going to do now?
Well, you know, I think what I'll need to say is that the planning commission had locked.
All right.
And that, you know, I know what they're going to do. They're going to approve it with the electronic message.
Yes.
It matters, because it matters how I advertise this. That really.
Do we need, Wally, a motion just, your base wording was good. We're disagreeing on electronic message, variable message signs. So do we need a motion saying?
Can we do a second motion to include electronic message signs?
Well, yes, we can. We can do that in God.
You can say this motion is already passed.
I want city council to know that we like the wording, we like the, what's presented to us. The disagreement is on, no one is saying that Wally hasn't put together a quality piece of.
All right, Karen's confirmed.
I don't think it's fair that they can be used everywhere across the city except village commercial.
That's my.
Okay, I just, yeah, no, I didn't, I voted with you then.
That's what we just voted on.
Well, but we're real, we're not really making that decision.
You're trying to send a message to the, to the council.
We're not making that decision. They won't make that decision. We're making a recommendation.
But Bill said with the exceptions of the, of the signs.
Well, he said the exception, he said the verbiage that was presented to us with the exception of allowing electronic signs.
Right, right. So somebody else maybe, what, maybe wants to make a motion that we accept it, including electronic message signs.
Because we're in a lot, do we have to come to an agreement? Is that what we're here, is that rubber rule? Or I don't know.
No, I think we're just going to say that, planning commission.
There's no parliament here in here.
I don't think so, because, because all we do is make a recommendation. I don't see where there's any.
I've never had a tie before, because I've never had.
I don't know.
We're redlocked in and let that be it.
I mean, we do.
We'd be happy to make a motion. And to accept the verbiage as written with the inclusion of electronic signs.
Okay. We'll see if that comes out any different. Not that I would.
They won't come out any different. Probably, we can try. You want it, do you think we should maybe let Angie make that motion and see if there's a second? Are we okay with what we got?
I'll be honest with you. I'm very confused. And to be honest with you, I thought I was voting, this is what I thought I was voting for. I thought I was voting for his verbiage, but I don't like the electronic signs. And so I thought you said, that's why I decided to vote.
That's like, you voted right. Excluding that correct sign, not, not.
The original motion did exclude Angie's motion.
But now, now what, what, kind of confusing, Jay, because what it would mean is that the city council has already voted to let anyone have electronic sign, but it's with the exception, I guess, of the.
Yeah, the village commercial would be the only district that doesn't allow electronic message signs.
My two misgivings are, one, that, and I agree with those two on that. In other words, either, and we don't. And then the second is, I don't agree with them at all. And so therefore, I like Gus's vote, I thought, because he was saying that.
Well, I think you voted the way, you voted.
I think you did.
Not the half.
Yeah, I think you did.
So you did right, yeah.
Will the council's vote not automatically give it to village commercial? I'm not sure. I, I, I didn't hear it, so I don't know what that, what they actually passed. But if it gave it to everything.
It did.
In the city, doesn't that include village commercial?
It does right now. As of right now, if you could, if you could have a freestanding sign in village commercial, which you can't, it could be an electronic message sign.
But I'm saying it covers, they didn't exclude village commercial from that electronic sign.
Because the provisions on electronic signs apply to commercial uses in all other districts. If you pass a version of this language that does not explicitly ban electronic message signs, they will be permitted in village commercial.
All right, so.
Was to accept with the inclusion of electronic signs.
Do we need, do we, you still want to do that?
Yeah, yeah, I will, I'll formally move to accept the sign verbiage with the inclusion of electronic signs.
Okay. Do I have a second? I will have two votes.
Okay, Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tiddler?
Um, no.
Commissioner Godden?
No.
Commissioner Travis?
No.
Chairwoman Travis?
Aye.
You know?
I think it's.
I think they should get the message. Okay.
If a coin toss was good enough for representative from Newport News, it's certainly good enough for the Pecosin planning commission.
Amen.
Okay, so we.
This is, I'm glad we made this meeting. This has been very spirited. Thank you.
Hadn't it? We've had, all right, we've had two votes now, so I think that's all we can do tonight on that.
We'll advertise it with, with two options in the city council.
Right. Okay, we've, we've recommended sort of, dividedly.
Sort of both ways.
Sort of both ways.
Whatever city council does, they've agreed with us.
We've covered our bases.
A W regardless.
Yeah, really. Let's cover bases either way.
One, one vote won't supersede the other. That's one sure thing. They're going to wash out and then exactly even. All right, so with that said, we're done with that, and we have communications and correspondence. Anybody have anything to communicate? I know next week, we've got a.
I do have something.
A work session.
And hopefully, it'll lead the evening on a somewhat of a high note. As of last Friday, a second draft of the comprehensive plan has been completed. And this includes a whole bunch of formatting changes, adding in a bunch of stuff that I had previously left out, and trying to incorporate all the comments that you have made over these past work sessions. The current comp plan is around 340 pages. This new document is just over 200 pages.
Wow, that is great.
Fair bit of stuff was cut out. However, there's one thing that is missing from this document, is that is maps. We have not started creating a new future land use map, a new zoning map. And I was hoping to try and include new maps of some of the weblands using data from VIMS that I could pull online. So what I'm saying is, this draft is almost complete. It is ready for you to look at if you so choose to, or consider in a work session if you would like that. So I guess I'm asking for some guidance as to when you would like to see this draft. Would you like to wait until the maps are done? Or would you like to schedule a work session, maybe next month or so?
We have one next, we have a work session next Monday night, a joint.
That's going to be a full vote.
That's going to be full. That's joint with the city council at 6 o'clock, on the 26th.
I think it would have to be in the next month to do it, since it hasn't been advertised, I think.
Well, I, I think it's to our advantage to try to get this thing over to city council. So, you know, unless folks are opposed, I'd like to see us, I, we looked at it enough. I would kind of hope that we could wrap it up in one work session. I don't know that I need to have the maps to approve the plan, unless the maps are going to really add, I mean, they're going to add to the, to the comp. I don't mean that. Unless they're going to add to any more questions, I don't know.
It's all right.
I, I just, I would like to see us turn it over to city council.
The only changes to the maps that are scheduled are just incorporating a handful of zoning and future land use changes to like two or three parcels. So that is the only change.
That'd be my own particular preference. Just, that's.
I agree.
So we want to, do we want to think about, like, the first of April? I know the first week of April is spring break, which, that's not a good time. So do we want to, you want to think about maybe the next week? Because we're kind of running out now. We're running out of time, because we've got that one next Monday night. Now, we could do another one, but I hate to have people have to do two in a week.
I would probably be out of town that night, Monday night.
On the 26th. Okay. Oh, do you.
You know, this, April the 6th is Friday, the following.
Oh, you will? Y'all both?
I'll be in Delaware for my funeral for my father.
Well, you, oh.
Maybe the third week.
Let's do that, because everybody probably might be, the third week, do you want to do?
The regular meeting day, maybe, the 23rd?
Is that, is that enough? That's enough for you to have an hour? We should be able to do that. All right, so we're going to do April 23rd. Is that the day it falls on, Karen?
No, I'm wrong. That's the 16th.
April, I was thinking that was a little late. April 16th. Is everybody around for that one?
I know.
Work session, 6 o'clock, before the meeting.
With the complaint?
Uh huh, yes.
When I'm reading over the, when I'm reading over the complaint, it always sounds great. I mean, in other words, I'm just curious, as I read over it, what should I, if you don't mind anybody telling me, what should I be looking for that?
I think the biggest thing that we should look for, is something I mentioned at the meeting when Bonnie wasn't there, is one of the charges that the mayor gave to the community participation team, look for ambiguities and inconsistencies within the comp plan, because there certainly were in the previous one when we came to the Big Woods area. And that, what I suggest is, everybody needs to sort of look at it, hate to say page one to page 200, but really, look for anything that's, that's inconsistent, anything that's in the, and, and I, I think that we really need to do that independently, not sitting around the table, because we sit around the table, we're just bouncing off each other.
Right.
And, you know, I mean.
I appreciate your point. Sorry, I didn't know what we even.
That's what I think is probably the most important thing to look at. So that really, when, when the staff goes to council and say, this has been thoroughly scrubbed at your request, looking for inconsistencies and ambiguities and those sorts of things that we've done the very best we could to get them out.
So if you can get us.
Yeah, I can certainly, you know, send the document out to you. You could take a week or a few weeks to look at it. Give me all the changes or anything you want, update it or fix it in the work session, and then I can incorporate that. And then it'd be ready, basically, to be voted on.
Right, right.
There'd be a good reason to have it that gives, to be honest with you, then I'll get it.
Right.
So that would be good, yeah, if you can do that. All right, so we would, we would have the work session on the 16th.
Well, I don't know if the maps would be ready.
No, we wouldn't be ready for anything, but just have the work session.
The whole thing at once, when it's.
And then when the maps are all, if we use all ready, then when you add the maps to it, we'd be moving right along. We'd be pretty much ready.
Were you going to do the map stand yourself?
It'd be, Wally and myself. It'd be, Wally and myself would be the ones.
Can you email me? I might be able to help you. I might. I can't make any promises, but...
What time is the March twenty-sixth meeting again?
Six o'clock before the council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Six o'clock.
We're just meeting with council before their, they're gonna be wore out that, man.
The council will, I think the council will wanna report on the comp plan as well.
Look for a place to park. It may be hard to find a place to park.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You may. See them in. But anyway, um, father had passed away.
He was ninety-two, had a great life.
Certainly to you, Jay. Sorry, sorry. Wasn't well, but... Okay. Well, with that said, I guess we'll go ahead and just see if anybody else has anything they'd like to say. Anybody up here? Y'all all done? No more messages for us? All right.
Just one thing. You, did you talk to anybody on city council about the sign? How'd you know the reason why they passed the sign? I don't bring this back up again. But I will. Why, tell me why, did you know, city council?
Uh, so a couple reasons. So, I watched the televised meeting. So, that was one reason. And then I had also called up Vice Mayor Freeman about it because when no one gave a reasoning, I was, I was, I was wondering about that. So, yeah, that's, that was... Oh, no, I'm sorry. That was the tattoo part. I'm sorry. The signs, yeah, I had called up, no, I didn't call him for that. I'm sorry. It's just for me, I think, listening to the, to the meeting. Yeah, I'm sorry. There have been a few that I've inquired about. So, I was confused. The minimum in my mind.
Oh, it just seems like we've all been up in arms about the amendment. I was just kinda curious. Have you knew why they...
But there was no definitive reason, right?
That's what I was curious. They're not?
Not the meeting.
Okay.
I don't think we have a right to challenge them. I think we have a right to tell them we, we're just trying to make sure we understand what you have in mind.
If you understand their logic.
For the signs, I think that was kind of the definitive. It's not fair.
Certainly.
We need to, we need to be on the same page. That's all it is.
We're at the work session next week. That's kind of one reason that we are going to be meeting with them. Because periodically, we've had, we've had joint work sessions and things that, you know, we kinda, kinda do make sure we're seeing how things are, how we think, I mean, how they think things should be going. That doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to go right along with it. Because in the cases we've had, I feel very comfortable with the vote that I've taken with it, just like, like Gus was just saying. I mean, I don't think our, I don't think we're here to rubber stamp everything. I mean, we're, we're not gonna do that. I don't think we have, we're not, we don't do that. We make the recommendations we feel from what we see, and we go from there. Now, whether they have all the knowledge that we don't, which influences their vote, I don't know. But we've done the best job we can. But we kinda want, I guess we wanna meet with them and kinda have some explanation of where they are going. I think what really kinda triggered it, you know, more than anything else, was the tattoo vote, Angie. Because I watched that meeting and it wasn't really any explanation or discussion. And that was what kinda made us think, well, you know, we, we kinda like to see that because it, it kinda gives us some idea why they voted that way.
And why did they vote that way again? I'm sorry.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. Because it really kinda wasn't a lot of discussion that night about it.
Thomas Kanal, the other day, he said that they never really talked about it.
It wasn't. I mean, I, I watched it and I didn't see a lot of, it seemed like it was just voted on rather quickly.
With the location, somebody, you know,...
Okay.
I don't know if it was ever brought out in council. I mean, that's the thing.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It just seems so...
We felt like the location, I think, was pretty good because of where it was. But I understand, you know, the one person that did come and spoke kind of against it at the end. I thought kinda working with the people was, you know, Dr. Taylor. He has the business there, which he seemed to have some reservations. So, you know, I don't know exactly what happened, but we'll, we'll chat with them and...
It would be nice if they could, if they had definitive opinions, to at least voice it to us so that we, I mean, they may be pretty, something that we don't know.
Exactly.
Someone's called them or a dozen people called them, and they could at least pass that information on to us. Maybe it's something we hadn't considered, but to just...
Or if they would bring it up in the discussion, that way we would see, you know, we would say, wow, okay, there, you know, there is a reason that we hadn't thought of because we weren't, we weren't exposed to it.
Exactly.
And, you know, it kinda gives us some reconciliation, I guess, or understanding of what their thoughts were.
Because if someone asked us, we would, we wouldn't have a clue.
No, mm-mm, no.
Like, we don't have a clue.
No.
We started with a Joe Gator, we voted against the car dealership too, and then anyone...
Wait.
So, yeah, so it's not, I don't have a problem.
No, and, and you know, that certainly is their prerogative. We can't, we can't go above that in any way because all we do is recommend, you know, and if they choose not to take our recommendation, we just have to say, okay. But it does help, I think, if we have that conversation sometimes. And we haven't really, I don't think we've really had anything for a while to know exactly, you know, what, whatever. But anyway, that's kinda what we're gonna do on the twenty-sixth.
I'm not sure whether this'll touch on us at all, but I've already heard some rumblings about the whole thing with going on with the Farm Fresh. So, I don't know if that's gonna involve us. The question is, who's gonna buy the Farm Fresh, or if anybody does? So...
Well, it'll be another big building sitting empty if they don't. And I...
To be honest with you, that's why I like to be more in touch with the council. Because people, people, those are the questions people often ask me.
Yeah.
You know, I can't answer them.
Council has nothing to do with Farm Fresh, I tell you that.
Pardon me?
They have nothing to do with that.
No, 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 no. But what I mean is that when it comes to anything, it's nice to be kept in the loop.
I would assume any grocer could come into that. Have to have council approval?
No, because it, they could do it.
By right, they could come in there. That's right. So, that wouldn't have to be approved? Would not have to be approved?
Unless they wanted gas pumps.
That's right. Unless it was something that needed, it's different. If it's just, just a store like supermarket.
You know, I know we're getting off track here. I don't wanna do that. But all the people who think...
They could be right in tomorrow.
Yeah, the only thing that stopped them was the gas pumps.
And there, there was some discussion. Walmart representative said to me, and I don't know if they had looked into possibly by...
I've heard just recently.
But they said it was, they, they didn't want, and now it's they're closing some of the Walmart, the little small, that's, that's...
I haven't seen where. I wonder where.
Oh, across the country.
I know the one in Hampton is packed all the time, and the one on Jefferson is packed all the time. I mean, I go into that one frequently on Jefferson Avenue.
I read, I read that not long ago. They're all gonna close.
It's a lot bigger than Farm Fresh is here.
The one in Jefferson.
Jefferson Harp, Harpington Road?
Yeah.
It's not much larger?
I don't know the square footage of that building, but...
I think it is. Yeah, I think they are. It's a...
It's a nice store. It's a very nice store.
Yeah. The one in Williamsburg is in a shopping center. I've, I've been to it. I haven't been in it, but, but that was some, some thought, you know, at that time that they had thought about it. Because Farm Fresh, I guess, they probably thought they were maybe...
I'm sure the owners will divide it up and do whatever they need to do to get it leased.
Absolutely.
Stand a hole in the pocket there.
Absolutely. All right. Well, Libby, do you have any comments before we adjourn?
I have one quick question for Wally or Danin, just for upcoming potential projects in the works. If the Robert Bruce development, the site plan that you received, if that's gonna be by right, by right development, or if they're gonna be looking for any modifications or CUPs?
It's a by right development. Right now, it's gonna be comments. So, you know, but adjustments will need to be made. We'll have to cut across.
Okay.
But it is, it is by right.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious if that would be something.
Where's that development? I'm sorry. I'm not familiar with it.
At the end of Robert Bruce Road.
Oh, I didn't realize there wasn't any land left down in there.
I think it was a track that was once considered for a park.
That's all, that was my only question. Thank you.
There's also the matter of, I guess, adjacent property owners were notified and there will be a period where they will be allowed to contact the developers and have some sort of a conversation with them about proposal.
Who are the developers?
Indeed. Well, AES is the engineer. The numbers are, it's on the tip of my tongue, Karen.
Westmoreland, I think.
Thank you. Westmoreland, yes. As Danin said, we have emailed the joint property owner. I think what we're gonna end up recommending at the end of the first review of comments is that they've actually scheduled...
Jay?
I apologize for being late, folks. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah, me too, honestly.
Gus?
I think it's important to notice that spring officially starts at twelve-thirty tomorrow afternoon and it snows on Wednesday.
That means no more snow, no more rain.
Other than that, have a nice week.
Somehow we get it Wednesday, it's gone by Thursday.
From Wednesday and Wednesday night, we want to remixes?
We wanna get rid of it by Thursday. Just like that last snow. It was great, big flakes. It was thickened, then it was gone the next day. So, that's what we like. That's my kinda snow. All right, with that said, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for coming. And thank you.